Andy Cable has volunteered. Last week, Ms. Burstfield came in, she's recently appointed as our VSS Director, and said that she felt that she would be in conflict to be the VSS Director and serve on the Health Board. So she submitted a letter of resignation to the Grand County Health Board.
Okay, we have motion to have Andy Cable to be on the Health Board?
Yes.
You have a motion? Second? Any questions or comments? All prayers? Good. Thank you, Andy Cable.
Next, the President of the School used Barri Creek property as a shooting range for the shooting team of Robinsonville Middle School and High School. I have a letter here from Jeff Knight that he wrote, and he asked that I read to the county commissioners. The county commissioner, I'm hiding you, to request the use of county-owned property near Barri Creek there at Grand County. Our use of this property would involve our school shooting team practicing there. Not only will we need to be using the property for practice, but every citizen of Grand County will have access to it as well. My only question is that while we are practicing, it would be close to public. Terms of property needs to be a considerable amount of work done to it to be used as a shooting range. I have a group of parents who want to secure the necessary equipment to develop this property into a shooting range at no cost to Grand County. I met with Grand County Manager Greg Cable on a couple occasions regarding this matter. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. Barri Creek property. And I was approached, I think several months ago, Ms. Cunnion came up to me, Bill, she's talked to me about it a few times, that piece of property and future use for it. The shooting team used to use the shooting range up on Ato. And the Forest Service no longer allows them to operate it there. So they have been trying to scramble around, scramble around and try, you know, to find a piece of property that they can develop. Many of the parents who are involved, the kids are involved in the shooting team, have donated equipment at times, to help develop this site and build it out so that it's more of a usable space. I met with Wes Negrona-Stakken, and I met with NCDOT to look at access, and I'm currently waiting on the company that has the MoE contract to cut down some of the under personnel to get some site licenses to approve that entryway.
I don't have any problem with that. I like it. While your contract relative from us to the school.
What about liability?
And that we have no liability whatsoever. The dollar responsibility to be on the school.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Well, since it is county property, I think if you even want to use it, we'd have to sign a liability clause because it's still going to be county-owned. And any group, whether it's the school that would use this facility, there is the potential to have a group, the Southeastern Press Association, who are going to hold an event in Grand County. They're a large outdoor enthusiast that do shooting sports and things like that, who are, best indication I have, are looking for a place in Grand County to help put some money into to develop shooting sports here. Anybody like that that used that facility would have to be under a, you know, a lot of...
Sheriff's Farm, actually, talk about qualifying, qualifying.
Yes, sir. It could impact the...
That's what the shooting range would do back then. I mean, that's only, they didn't have a big deal if they had a good place fixed up there.
Yes, sir.
As you get to.
Absolutely. And, you know, as, a lot of this is brought together, you know, as said in the latter county, costs will be very much at a minimum, you know. I mean, we may be looking at, since it's county property survival or something like that, you know, to help get everything put in place. But there is, there is a number of individuals or parents of his kids in the shooting team who wouldn't bring their heavy equipment and put their moves around.
I think I just remembered that it's in the area, but what, I mean...
Yes, sir.
In terms of people losing their doses, and they're really dead.
It's on the left hand side.
That's, and that's something I have engaged with North Carolina DOT, and Wes Negrona-Stakken was close to providing me with a letter from his engineers for the... It's different than the delineation of the wetlands that we did with the transfer station. It's, it's a complete, you know, the scenario is totally different than when we weren't considering that project at Barri Creek. Because now you're really looking at just entryway access for where there would be runoff like you would see in the transfer station. So they're working out those details for me to see if we would need, in fact, need to engage our 104 engineers. First impression was, may not need to at all.
I've got one other question. If something happened, we're not going to buy this idea, that we won't buy it around it.
That, that's what I was, it needs to be, but that needs to be put in the motion.
One note of caution, we're already permitted. We can't do anything until that permit comes out. I just thought of that because Alan Gaither just called me...
That permit is in fact suspended, right?
No, it's not. It's active. Alan Gaither just called me yesterday. What is today?
Okay.
Monday. He called me Friday, and it's still active.
Okay. The last time whenever I talked about him, and I think it was in August.
Yeah.
He asked what we wanted to do with that, and I told him to suspend it, and I wrote a letter to that.
Yeah, it's not.
And so I don't know if it just comes out of suspension after three months or what, but I will find out from Alan Gaither. But it was in fact supposed to be suspended because of the way it's here on the other piece of property.
It's actually active, and I just, Commissioner Eller just brought that up Friday after moving the hall, and so we need to hold on that because that's pending.
Okay.
And I'm sorry.
The only reason why that would actually be pending is the conversation I had with Mr. Mayfair DOT is, is that if Grand County is in fact able to purchase the location of our current transfer facility, the permit that we purchased for that Barri Creek would be modified as a county permit for our new location. So it shouldn't be a problem.
And also, that's a emergency site for disaster debris.
Yeah.
It is designated that for, but that's not anything that is required.
Is that a emergency management plan?
It is.
You have to have that in debris.
Debris, and we can do that on the lower end if they have the shooting range at the upper end, that wouldn't be a problem if we keep the debris on the lower end.
Yeah, we can buy a location for the debris as an option.
I suppose that mistakes around there. Would sound like we need to check to make before we make a decision.
I think most would tell you that we found that whole thing.
Motion to table. So, okay, all approved. opposed. That's a good idea, though.
But tell us, yeah, that we're not saying no, we've just got to get her votes in her votes, we might say, or not.
Yeah, and those are the shoes, yeah. And clay pits that's delivering the ground there. If they get wet, they dissolve.
Oh.
That's what the federal law will talk about.
The law key comes on.
Them clays that you shoot, dissolve when they get wet, they litter the ground up our shooting range.
Yeah. See, Troy Negrona-Stakken worked building to get that chute range we had up there. And of course, some people amused, but a lot of us did.
Right.
Then whenever the Forest Service did get over, figured what happened.
Right.
Like anything else, I figure, too.
Right. Well, the permit issue with the intercompany right now is not a major deal. I think it's just going to really hinge on what we are able to accomplish at our current Next on the list is Senior Center, new chair of trash bins for the new facility, $3,387.67. I don't have, Kim, you may be able to discuss this because this is something that was...
It's in that package. $750 of that is shipping what we had done. She had ordered the chairs before. There's $1,000 out there left hanging from a different company, a refund check that's due, we're going to have to get attorney Cody engaged on that. So you can take $1,000 off of that that's due back to us. So the whole total will be, you know, 2,000. The, the reason the shipping is so high, each chair weighs, I think I've got that total, I think they're 15, no, they're 20 pounds a piece, and then the trash can is 105 pounds. I was arguing with them on the, on the shipping, I wasn't going to pay that much, and then he comes back and he says they're 20 pounds a piece, and then the trash receptacle is 105 pounds. So I couldn't really, I kind of took the hint out of myself after that. But this is, this for the new, which I hated to ask during, you know, after all the government shutdown and stuff, but with $1,000 coming back in from the other company, I didn't mind so bad. Hated to ask for more money, but this will conflict, this should do her. This is the NSF trash receptacle that goes into the kitchen with the lid that's required, plus the one that goes into the dining area, and then her chairs that go into the table area. And like I said, we were owed $1,000 back for the chairs that didn't come. We take all of that, which I still don't like the $750 shipping.
Mine is a chair that goes around the table, they weigh 20 pounds.
They are metal-framed, lattice-back chairs, should last forever today. She was going to use the general purpose grant monies, so the money should come back, flow back into the county.
To which, which of the grants?
It's the federal's.
Federal.
It's the federal grant money.
Is that right?
In reality, it'll come back, yeah, it won't be county dollars, it'll be general purpose grant dollars that that money was used from, but, you know, we have, this is that upfront money again, and it's over my limit, and I can't, I couldn't use it, so we had to ask.
Well...
So we had to get permission first.
Do you want, did you say you think it must be the end of expenditures on this?
That should be about it on her furniture stuff, yeah.
I like motion, but it...
Okay, and that's be around $2,400. All right, we have a motion that we spent $2,400 here on Senior Citizen Building, new chairs, trash bins. Have motion, do you have a second?
Yeah.
All right, any question or comment? All approved, opposed? Mr. Mayfair?
Yes, sir. Next is just an update. Secretary Andy, economic director Andy Cable told you about, we did receive a $180,000 grant from the ARC for the Dolly Creek projects to expand upon the former president's, that was signed off by Governor Ford, and the letter was sent out. So we are working with Ryan Sherman and Southwest Commission to develop the scope, get everything together, get that money moving to Grand County.
Okay, we're going to send that RIT piece on that, and you're working with him on doing that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Ryan's helping us develop all that.
That's, that's good news.
Yes, sir. Next on the list, I have a proof memorandum, memorandum of agreement with Town of Robbinsville and I don't have anything on that, you know.
On that memorandum of agreement, did you get it published?
Yes, and I couldn't pick it up because my grandma's her uncle's, and she came back and I didn't, but I just...
Okay. The Town of Robbinsville, on their new wastewater treatment plant with the septic receiving station, we're, this is an agreement with them, they're going to be able to take everything we're doing through that septic receiving station, running through their new system, it comes out dry, they're going to bag it and put it in, in a garbage dumpster. They want us to pick it up, and it'll be picked up from us like a, we'll pick it up free of charge, taking part round. We're going to do a memorandum of agreement that says it's non-hazardous waste and hollow. It will allow the county to close down the septic receiving station, and they, in turn, all the commercial business, all the campers, everything there will go down to the new site down here.
Right next door.
Right next door, and they will take care of that. We'll no longer have the water bill, the septic receiving station at the transfer station, all that will be shut down.
It's a money...
It's, you know, yeah, actually, we'll save money, and, but we're just going to do a trade-off, it won't be charged. They'll bag it, it'll be dried waste, and they will have a container that has a lid, so there won't be any usage by anybody in the town.
Do they pose to pick it up for, and not pay so long to pick it up?
So we're not going to charge.
I would like to hear what's there, but don't forget you're following, you know, the town.
They didn't, they, they wanted us to pick it up with no charge. But I, I, I did state, I felt like, and I discussed this with attorney Cody, that we should have in there that it's non-hazardous after it's dried back. You're going to get it anyway, whether we pick it up right there or they throw it in a container, and they're making their rounds anyway. So the headache of not having to worry about who was with that and, and...
The violence?
Yeah, so...
Ground is not...
We're done with it.
How much motion have we made? The last, in this of the time.
Now, sir. Have motion, have second, to approve memorandum of agreement with Town of Robbinsville, and of course, the specification that town has just matured, being included in that resume, in that resume. Good, good. Okay, we voted on that? We did. All approved, we got it. All right, CDVG?
Yes, sir. Next is, as required for the grant requirements, I have to run you with monthly performance status report. First is grant number 10-C-2231 for October 2013 on the Senior Center, and to let you know that the performance schedule is on. Don't know if you've been able to get by there or not, a lot of painting going on, and the building is looking very, very nice. So it's, it's right on schedule and moving, moving right on.
All right.
Senior Center.
Senior Center, oh, yeah.
Next is grant 12-C-2417 for October 2013. This is the re-adaptation grant. The performance, the performance schedule is on currently. Ms. Stilwell has gotten the information, the already contract director, Andy Cable, so that the contractors can come around and start taking into consideration. And that is your update on both CDVG projects. There have not been any additional, any projects that have been stated by Ms. Stilwell or any, anything changed there.
Mr. Stilwell, remind me what the, the end date is on Senior Citizen facilities in November?
I think all funds, my understanding is that all funds have to be expended by February 2014.
But there was a, there was a November date that...
There was a November date that was requested by Ms. Stilwell to have all construction completed.
Right, so they have to close out, by the way.
The closeout.
Is that right?
And in our conversations with her, there was a little bit of wiggle room, she was being conservative, some of her members trying to make sure that that facility got done. I don't like them to have a problem getting done by November.
Okay. Good. Because weather, the weather thing was a big deal for us, so...
Weather was a big deal, some of the redesign things, things like that, you know, kind of shit in the schedule, and, but it's, they knocked it out, and it's, it looks really good.
Do you have a motion to accept the monthly status report, CDVG, grant number 10?
I do.
You have a second? Okay, all approved, all opposed? Wonderful, good. Thank you, Eric.
Next, on your agenda, we received a request of funds from the great organization for the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. You should have a copy of this letter in your, in your packet of information. Highlights of the letter, Dolly Parton Imagination Library is a proven book commercial program, provides high-quality books, one per month, from birth to age five, to all registered children of Grand County, regardless of income level. 287 Grand County children are currently enrolled and receiving books. 275 children graduated when they turned age five and started attending school. Since its inception in 2008, the project has served 612 children. What in the letter, they need a total of $8,000 to fully, to fully support this effort from 2014 year, they trust we can count on you. If we have not already done so, please support this very wonderful program this year. A donation of $35 will sponsor a Grand County child for a year. And of course, grant is a 501(c). There's no specific amount that they have requested from the board, they're just asking for a donation.
Do we have Ohio for donation? Thank you.
You'll tie that, so that he has to bring it at the same time.
I received a letter today from you, tie helpers, requesting a donation for the upcoming Christmas time. And I expect you, Becky, to, we are located, we donated last year.
I could money expenditures and all.
Okay.
I couldn't discuss it. If someone wanted to donate anything, please do.
I'll... Donate anything?
I believe we might never have a donation for, on there, for a second, I believe.
Yes, sir.
We have a big election.
If you are needing additional information from me on this...
You said to, to this great organization, your donation at the bottom.
See, they're taking these donations from the library?
Dolly Parton Imagination Library is through the great organization, not the library.
Okay, that's Jim and Donna Mize. Jim and Donna Mize.
Right.
All right. Any other questions on that? Comments? All good. Next, on the discussion items we need to go through and formally approve and open the polls that we need to be taking since our last meeting. First is the inmate program, the higher full-time supervisor, this poll was taken September 26, 2013. This was to help get some of the inmate groups out and working, and then make sure that we had the, had the staff there at the oversight. And this, this was approved now.
Okay, we need to have individual votes on each of these polls for record. All right, do we have a motion, we go ahead and for the approval of a poll taken on September 26, 2013, have a motion to re-meet program?
Motion.
Have motion, have second? Okay, any question? All approved. I think we already have that, that motion, okay? All right, okay, go ahead, sir.
Next is the smoking, the resolution that we did for the Smoking Mountain Center, requesting that the Governor, General Assembly revisit Centerville one night on the board structure for LME MCOs with a multiple county catchment area. This was called out, all board members voted in the affirmative during this poll, so we can get that resolution on its way to Rock.
Okay, they have motion for the approval of the resolution on the Smoking Mountain Center on October 1, 2013.
Seven.
Have motion?
That was against you, right?
Yeah.
That, that was asking the General Assembly or the Governor to step in and grant us more time to allow, basically to allow the General Assembly or the Governor to step in and give us some relief on a law that we firmly disagree with, as they have none for other counties in the state of North Carolina, like White County.
Yeah, this would be...
Right.
Have a motion, you have a second? Okay, referral.
Can I just say that's been a model resolution that all the counties have been opposed?
I thought the deal, the deal, is that the deal resolution?
Yes, sir.
Yes, okay.
Next, a poll that was done for the Senior Center for the dropping in a pipe and box instead of the riprap, the swale, is a total amount of $1,800, it was taken October 2, 2013. All board members were contacted and voted in the affirmative on that.
Okay, do we have a motion, you have a second? Okay. All approved, all opposed? Okay.
Next is a memorandum of agreement with Town of Robbinsville, Ohio's silvers, remove wastewater treatment plant to Ball Grun, Georgia, closing the septic, septic receiving station taken October 9, 2013.
Okay, may I ask a question? What is the difference in that and the one we voted on recently up there? About the memorandum of agreement with the Town of Robbinsville, dried waste? Is it not the same?
Well, it's the poll that was taken, you're just approving the poll, we've, I kind of got...
Okay, so we've already done it, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're just, you're just approving the poll.
That's right.
Yeah.
Really, we're not opening it, right?
Yeah, you're just going to approve the poll.
So that's already approved, the poll. Okay, we went, still did approve on poll, got it?
Yeah, we got it.
Have a motion, approve?
Yeah.
Second, have a second, all approved?
I just kept getting the same.
We have more poll votes. Okay?
Next is the Department of Government shutdown, the impact on county government, as we have discussed, briefly, we were able to get things back on track, and the USGo decided to get back on the job. So there were the scenarios that we laid out that we were back, and we called emergency meeting, did not come to fruition, and all indication is, is that the state will be receiving funds to reimburse for the amount of time in October that we were without, that the government was shutting down. So we're losing, I mean, that's, have you heard anything contrary to that, Becky? So we are glad to have that. The same sense, we are looking at a January 15, potential shutdown again with a decision debate on February 7. So the plans and the procedures that we, we developed, we can anticipate to need to enact at the time around the 15th of January, as information is sent out from the state of North Carolina, so that we can get a better understanding of the direct impact on the county. The decision is going to be the same as it was this last time. We will have to see from the state of North Carolina if anything changes. So in the emergency meeting, we had stated there was a motion, it was approved, that it had been governor of the state closed down from November, that Grand County Board officials agreed to pull the general fund, cover those expenditures. It does appear that we're going to need to do that. So since it was worked out, we need to pull those funds, and we also enacted a spending trial, we're going to be, you know, closely looked at, which we do all the time anyway, but a lot of those discretionary options will not be allowed. And at this point in time, we'd like to use the direction from the board, even though we're still watching our discretionary expenditures, we need to, you know, some, some of the things that needed to be gotten into appearance is a little bit relaxed.
Okay, I had a question on that during our work session, and we had some conversation. Was that a conditional motion, decision on the board, or is it one of those things we're going to have to take action on? Did it come through? That we did the appropriation on 125,000. What I'm saying is, we have to do that.
It doesn't, that's...
That's what I'm saying, was it unconditional? The motion?
Yeah.
You go get to fund those programs and services through November, year, year, the government.
So otherwise, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, it's conditional, so if we want to... Okay, great. Didn't this during work session, too, we're going to have to still have a plan for January? If we can have something, if this board can do...
I think the ladies of duty, like you, of our mates, may have something for those who are that...
For the January?
Yeah.
Well, we can, a lot of us want to mimic what you saw on the, at the last meeting, you know, and we can show you the potential with, you know, the senior services, and it's roughly dollar speaking, you're going to be looking at about the same thing. The only thing that we want to know is how, you know, the state... The only thing that we won't know is how, you know, the fed, the state is going to interpret what they're gonna require us to do, you know, for instance, in the last government shutdown, one day they said WIC's cut off, and then the next day they say it was, so sometimes it's a juggling act to be able to pinpoint exactly what that's gonna be, and be happy to do a presentation and, you know, talk about what the same things that we did at the last emergency meeting, but now that could change in January as we start to disseminate the information coming out from the state.
Could make margin, could make that up.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, good, absolutely.
But you, you know, one of the things is too, that, you know, it is a fix for that period of time, but at least, you know, the thing about the state is one issue, and I have opportunity to go down and know them, remember first or second, DNC, ACC, board records many, so I'll guarantee you, if it's not on the agenda, it's gonna be.
Yes, sir.
Because they, they hum us out to dry. That's all I'm gonna say, so that might be, well, I think, you know, that, that organization's worked very, very good, very, very hard in this, to make sure that, you know, that kind of thing doesn't happen. Whenever things goes all very crazy, this is what happens.
And, yeah, you know, the best indication that we have in our discussions is, if you come there to the state, they, they might have had some de-jerk stuff going on, you know, like with the WIC program, you know, pulling it back and then refunding it, and then, you know, they may look at, you know, how things turned out from the last shutdown and say, hey, you know what, we, we may not have to hit this program as hard, you know, these appropriations could be there. I think a lot of people at the state level are settling in and learning on the job, you know, but so, yes, ma'am, because a lot of those folks haven't been in that position before.
That's true, and it's, well, that, that's really important, I, I believe we can, you're right, Mr. Ted, that probably look a lot like what we're going down, but because one of the things of this too, if we do in fact, and you know, yeah, and what can they say, if we, if the fact that this been under that fact, we're not gonna be able to fully extend that out for two months, three months, is that we need to let folks know, Southwestern, you know, the child, the original childcare, we, we, please let people on the county know that come next state or whatever, is that they may have to find all the childcare services, and of course, we don't want to jump over the child wasteland, but we need to have it on.
Yes, sir. Uh, no, actually, for that, then, for your information, this Thursday, October twenty-fourth, we have the county manager's office at ten AM, Randy Gore, who is the work director for USDA, will be presenting a housing preservation grant, check in the amount of seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars and thirty-five cents. He will be coming in to the grand opening of the new wastewater plant for Town of Robbinsville, by the side about, looks good, looking real good, and he wanted to come in and provide the check that says USDA funds, which will accompany the C D B G funds, the scatter side. So that one will have the money in hand.
So they're gonna have the opening for that at eleven o'clock, right, for the water treatment plant?
Uh, so my understanding, the opening, and I can check the calendar real quick, or is that he's got an appointment with the town at, at eleven o'clock, and I thought the grand opening for the, uh-
One of the plants for, or some of the plants for, there's the lab and another one's-
They're gonna come here at ten, right?
Yeah, ten o'clock, for the housing preservation, noon for the town, so we're planning on-
Noon?
Noon is what I had on my calendar, and ten o'clock for doing the check, the county at eleven o'clock for doing, they were doing something with the town, and then the town still were planning opening, so, so, now, if something's changed, that's Thursday, uh, twenty-fourth.
Let me call back after eleven o'clock.
And it, it, it may have, you may have different information than I-
Yeah, I think everybody was in.
Okay, that might be why I have it on my calendar.
We go for it, boy.
What's this next one right here, the special dating public hearing?
That's that public hearing I called you about, November seventh, I believe, up to date, I mean.
Thanks, that's right.
My thoughts still ain't connected, you know, but I think it's November seventh.
November seventh, I'll have that public hearing at five, three, three, ten, transfer.
That's on Thursday?
Uh, Thursday, Thursday at five o'clock, yeah. And that shouldn't last that long, that'll be, it's been three, ten, grant.
Right.
Seven?
Seven.
Yes, I'm November seventh.
All the time, all that time, they'll be eleven o'clock.
Okay.
And I want to let the board know that the phone line to the sanitation is back up. So, that had been disconnected for a while, it's, it's operational.
Okay, we want to hear the business, folks, new or old business? New or old business? If not, have motion, we're going to close session with TS one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, eight, one, three, six, privilege confidential information, first now, time.
For the ten, right.
For the ten, right. Have a motion?
No motion?
Have a motion, second, all approved.
Oh.
Okay, we're going to close this until now.